Ready? Everybody seated? All right, I call this meeting to order. Rockledge City Council Regular Meeting, Wednesday, January 17, 2018, 6:00 PM. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Nick Leir.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here.
Please stand for invocation, and our Councilwoman Martin will give our invocation tonight, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Shalom, Father God, we're grateful for having the opportunity to come together this evening. We're thankful for this city of Rockledge, we're thankful for the residents, we're thankful that you have given us the, that you've bestowed upon us this board and these leaders of this community to do, to do these things, those things that are pleasing in your sight. I pray in the name of Jesus that you would bind us together, that our minds and our hearts will be on you, and that you would give us divine wisdom and knowledge to do that which is pleasing in your sight and that which is best for this community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all. Thank you, may be seated. The council has before them the minutes of their regular meeting, December 20, 2017. What's the pleasure to counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to approve the minutes, the regular meeting on December 20, 2017.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Presentations. Mark Suddick, come forward. You have a presentation. Special recognition.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm Mark Suddick with Florida League of Cities. It's an honor for me to be here with you all tonight. At this time, if I could ask the honor of having Joe Lee Smith join, join me at the podium for a moment. And Mr. Smith, everybody at the Florida League of Cities told me to tell you hello. I don't know how you are, so popular, but you can, you'd be president if you wanted to be. Mr. Smith, this is a resolution of the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated honoring Joe Lee Smith for 30 years of elected service and presenting him with the John Land Years of Service Award in recognition of his unselfish commitment to municipal leadership and governance. Whereas, America's municipal governments have long relied upon the unselfish leadership of their citizens for local self-government, and Florida's municipal governments share the time-honored role as the level of government closest to the people. And whereas, this reliance places extraordinary responsibilities upon citizen legislatures, municipal elected officials, who make significant sacrifices of their time and energies on behalf of their citizenry, often for little or no compensation, making this commitment a true labor of love. And whereas, municipal leaders strive for excellence in the governance of their city, town, or village, and commit themselves to providing quality services, governing effectively, and working to improve the quality of life. And whereas, the league has named its Years of Service in recognition, recognition and honor of John Land, the mayor of Apopka between the years 1949 and 2014. So you have about 25 years to go to catch Mr. Land. But he was a leader whose dedication is unsurpassed at the national and state levels, and who modeled the way for decades of municipal leaders. And whereas, several terms in office is a high compliment voters give to an official. And with these years of experience comes a strengthening of wisdom, discernment, and strong leadership skills that brings tremendous value to the municipal governments of Florida. Now, whereas, Joe Lee Smith has held office in the city of Rockledge for 30 years and is recognized for this achievement, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Directors of the Florida League of Cities Incorporated that Joe Lee Smith is commended for his dedication to the city of Rockledge and is hereby recognized as an outstanding public servant in Florida, adopted by the Board of Directors assembled this 18th day of August 2017 in Orlando, Florida. Susan Haney, President; Mike Suddick, Executive Director.
Mr. Smith.
Congratulations.
This is your lapel, Pam, to go with the award.
Do you do that?
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Well, let me say this, to all of the former mayors, I would say, and the city managers, and the city attorneys, and the staffs, and the, all of the employees, and the 26,000-plus individuals here in the city of Rockledge, I would just like to say that I'm most appreciative of this award. And what I have done, and still seem to be doing over these 30 years, I call myself a community public servant. And I'm just so thankful for all of the former elected officials and the ones we have here now, and all of the citizens, and all of the employees, for giving me an opportunity to do what I enjoy doing best, working as a community public servant. Thank you very much.
Well-deserved, Joe Lee, but I think it's over 32 years, isn't it?
We do have that name for him, so.
Yeah, yeah, I just want everybody to know, he's been here 32 years, though.
Oh, we will, I'll be back at 35.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mark.
Congratulations, sir.
Okay, next presentation. Cocoa Beach City Manager, James P. McKnight, and Cocoa Beach Chief of Police, Scott Rosenfeld.
Deputy Chief, and Major, can y'all come up, please, too? It's interesting that, as I sit here and look at y'all tonight, the only face that was here when I started in 1986 was Dr. Joe Lee Smith. So we go back a long way together and worked on a lot of different things over the years. So, Dr. Smith, congratulations on that kind of service record. It's, it's not easy to attain that, and doing it as an elected official is certainly an amazing thing. So, congratulations. Tonight, I'm here with a happy face. I think I came before y'all in October, and it was not as a happy face. I was just came to say thank you for letting us stay. I'm here tonight for saying, to say thank you for allowing our communications officers to remain for a period of about four months, working out of your communications center at your police department. I know when we built that new facility, we knew that that was a receiving location in the event of a storm, but we didn't, did not anticipate staying four months. Unfortunately, though, the comm center was inundated with water, as I watched our roof blow off of our police station in City Hall. But I'm happy to say today that the building is about 95% ready. We have a new roof, and we have redone offices. I think they have a better facility than when they left. It's still not a great building, don't get me wrong, but they have better inside than they did when they left. So, we're real happy that we're getting our entire team back together. But mainly, we're here to say thank you, because this is one community helping another. And you made it possible for us to continue to, you know, function. You accommodated us in every way possible. You made us feel at home, and that was really important. Chief Lasada said he thought he saw some stains on the carpet, and I told him that was tears when they had to leave. So, they, they really did appreciate it. But they're glad to be back home. They've expressed that already, and we're glad to have them back home. I have with me tonight, I have Police Chief Scott Rosenfeld, Deputy Chief Wes Mullins, Major Chris Kuhn, who happens to be a resident of Rockledge.
Good.
And there, so I told him to keep paying his taxes. Anyway, and we would like the mayor, if he would, to come down for just a minute, and Chief Lasada, would you come up, please? We have a presentation we'd like to make to y'all. Chief Rosenfeld?
Mr. Mayor. How are you, sir? How is Chief?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, sir. Well, as you know, we've all been displaced since the hurricane. And again, thank you for giving us the opportunity to say a few words. It's been quite a challenge. Most of us were moved into trailers in the city and out to our Public Works facility, but we were still home in the city. So we were still able to pass on information, have face-to-face contact, but our comm center, communications center personnel, were not. But Chief Lasada and his personnel made them feel like home, and we certainly appreciate that. And I'd like to present a plaque to the city of Rockledge to express our appreciation. Mr. Mayor, presented to the city of Rockledge in sincere appreciation for your generosity in the months following Hurricane Irma, you unselfishly opened up your 911 center to our displaced telecommunicators, allowing us to continue providing exceptional service to our residents and visitors. We thank you for your partnership. City of Cocoa Beach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Your building over there, too.
That's mine, that's mine. Thank you.
Okay. Planet Fitness, our manager, come on up.
Tim Donald, he's our general manager. Planet Fitness, 1802 Rockledge Boulevard, Rockledge, Florida, Business of the Year 2017. On behalf of the Rockledge Business Development Committee, it gives me great pleasure to inform you that Planet Fitness has been selected as the Business of the Year for 2017. The city is incredibly grateful for all the things you have done for our community, such as opening your facility to non-members after Hurricane Irma to allow them to get hot showers, air conditioning, Wi-Fi access, and to recharge their phones. Donated 14 three-month memberships that were given away as prizes for the city's Step Challenge. Donated 40 courtside tickets to the Magic Game, along with the same number of refreshment vouchers to the city of Rockledge for the PAL organization, which was big this year. Invested in improving your facilities, which is a win-win situation for everyone, as it brings a higher profile for your business and the community as well. Donated recently some equipment to our Department of Public Safety to create a workout room. All too often, people get caught up in just getting by and taking care of themselves and those close to them, yet you and your company have continually gone the extra mile to help the city and others in our community. The city is most appreciative of your support and stands ready to reciprocate should the need arise. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As the Planet Fitness rep sits down, let me say that for those of us who have not been to the facility on US 1, if you get a chance to do so, that is by far one of the most finest facilities, physical fitness centers you could find anyplace. If you just want to just go in there and tour, they keep up with the modern equipment, they have personal trainers in there, and even they're taking a couple of pounds off Joe Lee Smith, so please, go by, thank you.
Great. All right, let's move on to our Employee Safety Awards for 2017. Safety Employee of the Year Award, Kevin Shropshire, wastewater. Come on up, Kevin.
2017 Safety Employee of the Year. That's a really good spot.
Stephen H. Wilson, City Hall.
She wants to give a speech, Mayor.
Okay. Christopher Megan, Wastewater Treatment and Water Reclamation Department. Get them up and get them out of here real quick. Now, this is the secret agent stuff, guys. This is something we don't know until we get here. They don't even tell the mayor who the Employee of the Year is, but the Employee of the Year for 2017, Ryan Bishop. You want to take five? Let's take five minutes. We'll re-adjourn at 6:25.
Oh, yes, you are.
All right, let's re-adjourn at 6:27. I think that's what that says. Okay, we got a financial budget report. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Move to be in receipt of the financial budget report for the month of December 2017.
Second. We have a motion? We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Public Hearings Ordinances and Resolutions, Second Reading Ordinance and Public Hearing Ordinance Number 1728-2018, Amending the Parking, Stopping, and Standing Ordinance. Who's going to give that to me?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Offer Ordinance Number 1728-2018, Amending the Parking, Stopping, Standing Ordinance, and move for the second reading of the ordinance by title only and open the matter to public hearing.
A second for discussion.
We have a motion? We have a second? Discussion.
I spoke with Dr. Fettro yesterday about this, concerning something that I saw that Lexington, Kentucky is doing, and I thought it might be something that we could think about at some point, changing that. I mean, this is a process we would have to go through to do this, but what they are doing in Lexington now is, a lot of their fines, their traffic fines, they're allowing to be paid by people making donations of food that we can give to the food bank or to whoever we choose to give it to. Dr. Fettro and I immediately came up with two or three different organizations that could benefit from it. You know, you bring in so many items of food, you get so much off your ticket, and make it at a point where people could save a little money by donating the food as opposed to the full value. So I just wanted to point out that I have asked Dr. Fettro to look into that and see if that's something that we can work with and comply with, whatever.
So you're going to bring this back to us once this, once this gets up and running?
Yeah, once we get some more info together on it. I just wanted to counsel.
Any other discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Ordinance Number 1728-2018, in ordinance of the city of Rockledge, Brevard County, Florida, amending Article III of the Rockledge Code of Ordinances by adding and clarifying definitions, adding the Rockledge Code enforcement officer as a person of authority to issue citations, increasing fines for parking violations to $40, clarifying procedures for processing and paying fines relating to parking, stopping, and standing violations, declaring that invalidium portion hereof shall not affect the remaining portion of this ordinance, providing for the effective date hereof and for other purposes.
At this time, I declare this open to the public. If anybody would like to speak on this second reading on amending the parking, stopping, and standing ordinance, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this Your one chance to speak on this ordinance, seeing none, close the public hearing. What's the pleasure to counsel? Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move for the adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Reports from boards and committees. Who's giving that to me tonight?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to be in receipt of the minutes of the following meeting, Code Enforcement Board Minutes of Meeting on December 14, 2017, and to look at the other appointments and reappointments as mentioned further.
Second. We have a motion? We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, reappointment, Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I'll move for the reappointment of Michelle Doyle, Rick Morton, and Cordell Rolle to successive three-year terms on the Planning Commission.
Second. We have a motion? We have a couple of seconds? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we got appointments. City Clerk Nicholas explained that there is currently one vacancy for the Planning Commission. One application has been received from Mrs. Amy Tid. It's a pleasure to counsel.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Ferguson.
I move to appoint Amy Tid by acclamation to the Planning Commission, sir.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Congratulations, Amy.
Thank you, welcome. Thank you for putting your hand up.
Unfinished business. A action, action item, award of bid, purchase, and installation of prefabricated sailcloth for the shade structure at Larry L. Schultz Park. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add a little more information, the crab committee has sort of brought this forward at the recommendation in previous months, and there is money budgeted for this purpose. The city received the three bids in your packet, but with regard to the, quote, "we can shade it" bid, I have a little more information for counsel to consider. The quote itself talks about steel poles, and in talking to the company representative of the president, actually today, as late as today, getting even more information, if the council chose to do aluminum poles, those would rust, or almost wouldn't rust, and be even better, and the increased cost would be just another $600 in total, because right now, it's $16.7 to do the steel poles with the coating, and with the aluminum poles, it would be $17.3. And with regard to warranty, several of you asked, when this came before you, gosh, several months ago, about a warranty. You'll see that it says a 10-year limited warranty. I got clarification on the word "limited." So it is a 10-year warranty, and where the limitation comes in is if we happen to leave the sailcloth up in a named storm, tropical storm or hurricane, of which, of course, we would not do. So the cloth material, the manufacturing, the stitching, the hardware is all covered under this 10-year warranty, and therefore, I just want to make sure counsel knew, because you had a question about the warranty in the past. So, back to you, Mayor and counsel, with whatever your pleasure.
I, I think it's a no-brainer to go with the aluminum, because it's a lot less maintenance that our Public Works has to worry about, and I think it's going to last much longer with the aluminum, what it is. Everything rusts in Florida. If you don't go with aluminum, it's going to rust. It's just a matter of when it rusts. So, we're under budget, folks. We're at $30,000 budget, correct?
Yes.
For this year, and we're at $17.3 if we go with the aluminum. So it's up to the council.
Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
I'll move to award the bid for the engineered sailcloth structure at Schultz Park to "we can shade, we can shade it," and that is with the modification of the aluminum poles.
Okay?
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Does everybody understand what we're doing? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. B, action item, approval of extension, plating of harvest, landing, PUD, HH Rockledge 155 LLC. Alex coming up? You have a card for speaking? Let's let Alex speak first.
What you have before you is a request from HH Rockledge 155. This is a PUD that was previously approved two years ago off of Pluckybaum. It is 151 acres. They're proposing 455 units. As part of the land development regulations, that PUD is only valid for two years. So they are coming before you tonight to ask for an extension.
Does everybody understand the property we're talking about? Okay, did we have a speaker?
Mr. Moya.
Mr. Moya.
Name and address for the record, sir.
Hi, good evening. Yeah, my name is Bruce Moya. I'm the president of MBV Engineering. Will be the engineer on the project. Just getting started, so we'd like to get the extension so that we can continue on, so I'm really just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Anybody have any questions, or this gentleman?
Just one question.
Two questions. Go ahead.
Okay. The traffic in that area is pretty, it's risen quite a bit. Where Clear Lake ends and Plucky Bomb is, and that's right where that corner is, if I remember right. Is there going to be any improvement in transportation roads in that area?
We, like I say, we just got started on this. We're hoping that when, if we can move this board, we can start addressing those issues with staff. We haven't even met with staff to discuss anything regarding traffic, utilities, even the layout of the property, so we'll be addressing those if we can get.
That is already on staff's radar.
Okay, I just hadn't heard anything, so, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to poke up the radar return a little bit here. As you start in on your engineering on this project, one of the things that makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it would make sense to your customers as well for the finished product that you're going to develop, and that is to, Alex showed me a map yesterday, to extend, work with the city and figure out a way to extend Clear Lake Road so that your property could feed directly into the city of Rockledge as opposed to going up to Plucky Bomb, so you could come out on Barton, on West Barton. I know that's a little beyond what you were looking at, but yeah, I think as we're considering the infrastructure with this project, I would like to see you and Alex and the rest of our staff work together to see if that's not something that we can and I'm not talking directly just to you on this, I'm talking to her and everybody else, but yeah, she, I've already talked to her. But I really think that being able to market it as something that's going to feed right into Rockledge as opposed to basically having to go up through Cocoa to get anywhere is going to benefit the people who would buy there, make it a more attractive lot, and you know, it would also, it would help the city because we put a lot of money and we're still putting a lot of effort into renovating Barton Boulevard here, so people would be able to come right out of there, down to Clear Lake, hit Barton, and come in to take advantage of the various restaurants and shopping opportunities here in the city. So I'm throwing this out there for your consideration. I'm going to support the extension, but when I see a site plan, I would be a lot happier if that's included on it some way, and I'll address that to both of you.
Okay, we hear you loud and clear, and I'm sure we'll be having those discussions.
We have to do some infrastructure improvements anyway. I understand we've got to work out some things to get sewer and everything in there to that property for you, and as long as we're doing infrastructure improvements, you know, might benefit both of us. We can work something like.
Got a lot of work ahead of us, and we'll be.
We do.
Okay.
Any other questions? Any other discussion? We have a motion? We have a second? Do we? None, okay.
I'll second it.
No, I'm looking for a motion.
I don't have a motion.
Then I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
That we extend the zoning for the project at Harvest Landing, Rockledge 155.
Okay, extend the PUD.
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Do we have any further discussion? Call for the questions, Mr. President. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. You got it?
Thank you.
Go to work. Consent business, Mr. Dasky.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Move for the approval of these consent business items. First is use of forfeiture funds for purchase of two additional body cameras and accessories for the Department of Public Safety, replacement of wastewater treatment plant generator cores and temporary generator for use during repairs, wastewater treatment department, declaration of surplus property approved to sell items as is on eBay for Public Works Department.
Second, the motion. We have a motion? We have a second? This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Eleven, new business action item, constituent request for exception of Rockledge Land Development Regulations to construct an eight-foot fence. City Manager?
Sure, thanks, Mayor. I actually went out and eyeballed this myself. You can come up, Alex, in case they have more detailed questions, but in essence, it's a property whereby the back portion of the property is where the fence would be eight feet in total because it slopes down on the back property line, but the fence itself would be six feet in height all the way around if approved. So it's simply due to a slope on the backside that would, if you approve, would enable it to be eight feet in total, but six feet in height, if you will. Back to you all, unless you have questions for Alex.
Everybody understand what this is? Anybody got any issues with this?
Well, Mr. Matt, we understand that this will bring that incompatible with the other part of the neighborhood.
That's correct.
If a motion is in order.
It's in order.
I'll make a motion.
Right ahead.
Second.
We have a motion? We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Action item, engineering of master drainage outfall headwall replacement, Tetra Tech, Public Works. Ken, you coming up, or Brenda going to do this?
Ken, you can come on up if you would, as I just introduced it perhaps, and Matthew, you's queuing up the pictures. During Hurricane Irma, with the extensive outflow of water, our headwall shifted, some other things took place. We do, Ken has some pictures for y'all to see exactly with what we can see visibly, kind of what's going on. And this, if approved, would allow some engineering, geotechnical and other work to be done by our Tetra Tech, who is already under a continuing services agreement with the city. So Ken, I don't know if you want to run through the pictures quickly, if.
Sure.
Name and address for the record.
961 Pines Drive, Kenpool. I live in Rockledge. There's a location tab up here where the outfall is to the river, and just to get your bearings, Gus Hip, this is just to the north of Gus Hip. It comes under US 1, 360-inch pipes and turns into two eight-by-eight boxes and 100-foot drainage basement that we have, and when it goes under River Road, it turns into two 72-inch pipe.
Are those concrete pipes or metal?
They're concrete. Everything's concrete. That's the good thing.
Good.
When we had, we went and checked after the flood, we noticed that there was a gap between the ground and the headwall. So we ended up pouring three and a half yards of concrete behind it to stabilize it. This is where we poured the concrete out by the river. It's shifted, the top has shifted out, just to, these are some other holes that came exposed when the headwall shifted. Go ahead, Matthew. These are holes. This is before we poured the concrete. The last two pipes that are connected to the headwall, these, this is the last pipe and the next to last pipe that you're looking at. So the headwall has shifted out, pulling the joint apart, and has actually fractured the pipe. We think that the second pipe is very much salvageable, but we're going to have to have a headwall made precast. This was done back in 60s, and I have no plans on it. We don't even know if there's a foot or under the headwall. So just another picture. We took four pictures, both north and south of both joints. So you can see they both pulled out. So Tetra Tech's coming up with a set of plans, and they're going to do spec work, and they are also going to bring a bid tabulation so we can bid this out.
Have we reported this damage to FEMA?
Yes, we've met in the field. They know about it.
Good possibility we can get some funding on this from FEMA.
I hope so.
Okay.
This one here, you can see where the headwall has actually pulled away from the pipe. It used to be flush.
And you say one of the pipes is cracked and the other one's not?
Well, one is, we don't know how far it's cracked, but we do see a crack, and the other one moved to where the the purge on the inside of the pipe popped.
You're going to excavate the road right there?
We're going to try not to. It's going to be delicate with the cocaine.
Okay. A lot of water comes through there.
Yes, sir, I don't want to lose that headwall.
No, I know. I know. Okay, so we're looking for an action item on this to move forward with the engineering?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the task order from Tetra Tech for engineering the master drainage to outfall headwall replacement.
Second. We have a motion? We have a second? Keep in mind, we're going to be going back to FEMA and asking for reimbursement on this. So hopefully, we'll probably maybe see some money in two or three years. That's how it works.
Maybe.
We're dealing with the federal government, okay? All right, we have a motion? We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action item, approval, City Manager, evaluation document. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. As per my contract, this is the document by which you all will evaluate me in writing. So if you approve it tonight, then it will come back to you with a memo, cover memo from the mayor asking you to evaluate the City Manager and a deadline by which to do that. Back to you.
There's no action on that, right? We need to approve the document. Okay, go ahead.
Motion to approve the evaluation document.
Second. Motion? We have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Petitions, remonstrances and communications. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to your city council about anything in the city of Rockledge? This is your opportunity. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to your city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? This is your opportunity. Seeing none, let's move on. City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. Each of you in your box tonight, your mailbox, got an invitation for the Fire Ops 101. It's the first time the city will be doing it. Department Director Lasada and the fire, fire folks are inviting us, the council, myself, to kind of have a team-building exercise to learn more about the fire department. So look for that in your mailbox if you haven't already received it. Also, this Friday is the Florida Arbor Day. Clerk emailed, Joe, I think, yesterday. Just a friendly reminder, that's this Friday at 4:00 PM at the McKnight Family Sports Complex. Come help us plant a tree. And lastly, but not least, just a friendly reminder, the arts and crafts show is coming up Saturday and Sunday, January 27th and 28th respectively. We hope to see you there. Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, somebody going to give me the city attorney litigation report?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to be in receipt of the city attorney litigation report dated January 2, 2018.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, the second case on the lit report, forfeiture of $77,690. We're on a trial docket. We'll be trying the case in May. There are quite a few things that we have to do in between to comply with court order, to get it set up for trial. Forfeiture cases are jury trials.
Going to jury trial?
Statute has to be unless it's waived by the claimant. So it'll be a six-person jury trial, and we'll probably be getting it somewhere, as I said, in the May docket. And nothing else. The other case that's on there, other than our old friend, Rockledge versus Watson Paving, this is one that I'm just receiving pleadings regarding the case. There's been nothing but some preliminary things. Now, the league is handling it. I'm just staying on top of it to let you know what's going on. And that's all I have in the lit report. If somebody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions, or the city attorney?
Sure. Just for information, Ms. Peggy Clark, who was my right arm, my eyes and my brain probably most of the time since 1989, has retired. And my new assistant is Ms. Brendan McCollum. I thought I'd start keeping it in the family. She's my fiancee also. She'll find out whether she really wants to marry me after we've been in the office with her for a while. And other than that, I have nothing else.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. All right, let's move on. Report from the dais. City Clerk.
Yes, I would like to please remind everybody and request that you, if you are not already utilizing your cityofrockledge.org emails, to do that. If you need assistance, Network Administrator Dyer is happy to help out, so I know some of you now have the city-issued cellphones, but it's really important that you transition to the cityofrockledge.org email. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney, anything on that?
Nothing else, thank you.
Councilman Hartzell.
Busy with school getting started. Still a lot of fun, even after, this is my second year teaching, so, full-time. So off and running on that. The key club for Rockledge had a basketball tournament over the holidays, and I understand they did very well. I was there one night and it was packed. So there were a lot of people having fun with that.
Good. Thank you. Councilwoman Martin.
I'd just like to say that I represented the city, and I think Dr. Smith can say I did fairly well on Monday at the MLK Day observance in Cocoa. For the city of the Cocoa, I was their speaker. And also last night, Mayor, you may want to elaborate, there was a scholarship or a college fair at Rockledge High School, very well attended, sponsored. I think the coordinator was Michael Kador.
Yes.
And that is, it was well attended.
Yes, it was.
I attended that as well.
Lot of scholarships.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Dr. Smith?
Yes, sir, I was going to piggyback in on what Councilwoman Martin just said. Those of you who missed that speech she gave Monday at the Martin Luther King, the coalition celebration, let me say, you were wonderful. You were fantastic. You were right on time. No, she did a wonderful job. Congratulations. And Rockledge was well represented there. Number two condolences, condolences go out to Councilwoman Dasky and family.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And number three to all, this is our first meeting in this year. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Dr. Ferguson. Good evening, yes, sir. I'd like to say, obviously, congratulations to Dr. Smith on receiving the recognition from the Space Coast League of Cities, 32 years. It's amazing, amazing. Thank you, sir, for your service to this community. Also to say congratulations to our employees that received their recognition tonight. Steve, you're in the back. Congratulations, sir. Job well done. And for all of the other employees, I want to also share with everyone that was sworn in last week with the Space Coast League of Cities as a board member, and I'm honored to serve on that board. I'm excited about the opportunity, as well as I'm going to be a part of the advocacy team as well. And so, Dr. Petro, we had that conversation. I'm excited to be able to travel to the end of the month to Tallahassee, to the legislative days, and I'm looking forward to it. I, along with Mrs. Martin, Councilwoman Martin, along with Vice Mayor Forrester and Dr. Petro and Mayor Price, we all attended yesterday at Rockledge High School. I got the numbers, and I was actually blown away by the numbers of the students that attended. There were 410 students that attended the scholarship fair. Well, that's not, that's not the best. There was over $4 million in scholarships that were awarded yesterday, and that speaks volumes of us that happened here in the city of Rockledge, that happened at Rockledge High School. Thankful to the infinite scholar founder, along with, obviously, Mr. Kador that helped to sponsor and help to bring that here to the city. So I'm excited about what's going on in the city. I was told as well, they're going to be wanting to come back real soon to share congratulations and share the updates because those are just the preliminary numbers. That's not even the final numbers.
Right.
There's more students and more monies that were given out.
We're throwing money out that last night.
I was amazed with it.
The one, the first girl got $160,000.
Yes, she did.
And that was like 15 minutes after it started.
Yeah.
Whoa.
But I yield.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Dasky.
Just a couple of things. Congratulations, Dr. Smith, 32 years. I can only hope to get there someday, so. But congratulations. Congratulations all the employees and the awards this year, and Happy New Year. That's all I have.
Deputy Mayor Forrester. Deputy Mayor Forrester.
Congratulations to Dr. Smith. I'll never make it that long. It'd make me older than Dick Blake. But the scholarship thing yesterday was, that's the first time I'd ever been to anything like that. I was, I was very happy to see several of my former students there, and I was kind of blown away, as everybody else was, by just how fast the money was flying and the kids were stacked up, and it was pretty impressive. I do have one issue that I just wanted to, I guess, ask the staff to look into, and that is, we had talked about this at one point previously, and we kind of got distracted by some things like our hurricane and things like that, but, and that is to look at the way the city could incorporate solar power for our facilities. And I don't, you know, I know there's a lot of parameters. I know it has to be a cost-effective thing, because we're not going to throw money away. But I can't also help but wonder with the advances and the lowering of cost for solar power, if there's not some way that we can power at least part of our city with solar. And so I'd like to see us take a look at that, if Dr. Fetter, if the council doesn't object, and just have the staff to start taking a look at it. Keep it in mind as we go through, I know they, Dr. Fetter told me they had some discussions about it as far as Fire Station 2 is concerned. And while it may not be feasible there, that's a fairly small footprint, high-demand kind of building. You know, we've got, we've got some ground over at the water treatment plant and some other places around the city that we could possibly derive some benefit there. So throwing it out there just as an item for consideration.
Other energy sources as well?
Sure.
And we discussed that today with the construction of the new fire department, and the engineers are telling us that solar is decades' payback, decades still. With all the technology changes and the costs coming down, it's still decades of payback. They're still looking into it, I think, for us, but, but I think we need to look, if we're going to look at anything with solar, and I've said this before, I don't know if the technology is there yet, but our streetlights. We pay, Matthew, how much a year? People, citizens have no idea what we pay a year for streetlights. Like, how much? I thought it was more than that. I thought it was almost $500,000.
I thought it was more like $400.
You have $400 and something thousand dollars a year the city of Rockledge pays to have streetlights on at night, and...
But that's also part of a bigger contract for, for changing bulbs and maintenance and stuff, too, I believe.
That's true. That's true.
Probably the actual cost of the power is, but that was something I brought up when we put the new streetlights over on US 1 and here along Barton. It's like, can we do LED bulbs? Can we do, and the power company...
They don't like it.
They don't like it.
It don't use as much power.
They don't like it. They gave us a bunch of garbage about it.
Yeah, but our streetlights we own on Barton. No, they're not, but we could change those LED.
Yeah, we have to.[1748.53]